Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for October 28, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Item number one, 15907BZ, 2402 86th Street, Brooklyn.
Hello. Good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Before we start, I just wanted to welcome, now that this is a little bit bigger audience, I wanted to welcome our new executive director, Ryan Singer, who comes to us as the former deputy, former, as in like two days ago, Deputy Director of the Bronx Office of City Planning. And we're delighted to have him. And yeah, more good things to follow.
Good morning and welcome. Eric Palatnik, on behalf of the property owner.
Okay. For a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And I just wanted to add that this one should be conditioned on the violations being removed. The applicant was very responsive, but just to keep in that tradition and remove the violations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number two, 15908BZ, 68-70 Spring Street, Manhattan, Greenberg-Tarik.
Good morning. Dan Eggers of Greenberg-Tarik, on behalf of the applicant.
For a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items. Item number three, 24532BZ, 12305100, and First Avenue, Queens.
Is there anyone here for the applicant? There was a request to adjourn this, but I don't know if there was any specific request for a date, so yeah, do we have a request, a specific request for a date on adjournment?
It's Carter's case.
Okay. So how about we just adjourn it for a month? Is that good? So this is the 20, till the 25th of November?
Submission date?
The 11th, sorry, the 12th of November.
Okay. Item number four, 92157BZ, 6602 New Yutrich Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Eric Palatnik. We reviewed, we attended your review session yesterday, and we heard your board's comments. And I do apologize, we failed to include within our submission the justification that you had asked for last time on why this automotive repair shop should be allowed to be maintained at this location. And I heard your comments yesterday, being next to the club, the lounge, to the left of it, or behind it, I should say, as well as other commercial uses up and down the block, including a manufacturing type use right across the street, a car wash down the block, a little bit of self-storage facility across the street, and a 7-Eleven on the other side of the street. All that stuff is all, all those uses, not stuff, all those uses are surrounding the premises. And I should have included that in a revised statement to give you, Board, more justification for maintaining the use. And we will do that. With respect to the parking, we will, we will have the stripes put in for the spaces. It's not really so much for customer parking. It's really, you know, there's very few customers that actually come, other than to drop and pick up their cars that are being repaired. But we will put striping in. It's really for the service of the people and the cars that are being stored for service.
Well, it also, it provides organization for that site, which provides a better appearance for that site.
Yes, it does. It looks more orderly with lines. So we'll put those in. With respect to the plantings, I went back and I reviewed the last set of approved plans. The plantings were only, were not shown on the side where the residential use is. And I know that you had the conversation yesterday, I think you were asking maybe, perhaps, to put plantings in there. The only reason I would try to rebuff the request is because it's really, it's a parking lot of an automotive repair shop that butts right up against the building, the other building, the foundation of the other building. And I don't know, A, if the other owner really wants to start introducing soil and moisture up against their clapard side wood structure. I don't know if that's so good for them. And two, the maintenance, to be realistic, I mean, I'm off in the Yutrich Avenue in an automotive repair shop. I don't know if, if the maintenance of the landscaping is going to create quite the desirable effect. When I represent a convenience store use, or something like that, where there's a lot more outdoor activity occurring with customers, you know, there's a lot more maintenance of the landscaping. I'm just afraid it would become, really look disheveled over time, as opposed to, I think, what you're trying to achieve.
I think there were two parts to it. There was one, that there is a planting bed along one of the perimeters that already has some plants.
Correct.
And then it sort of, sort of dissolves into nothing, right? And so the idea is, if you could have, they actually look fairly healthy from the photographs.
Yeah, they're maintaining them for the club. The club wanted them. They were, they were the ones that asked to put in plantings there, so they accommodated them.
Okay, so then to continue them all the way along, there's already a planting bed.
On that side? Okay.
So that side was already attended to by waterproofing or whatever, when they built the planting bed, right? But the other side, it wasn't so much about planting, it's that the, that there's this sort of scar tissue from, there must have been a fence standing right in front of that clapard wall, and then the people paint, whoever painted the side of that wall, and then they removed the fence, and then there's all of this scar tissue from behind, from what was originally hidden by the fence. So the issue is, it's unsightly now. So it's not about planting it, it's about...
Perhaps I could ask the owner of our property if they could request of the owner next door, maybe if, I don't, I don't really know what the proper solution is. I'd imagine if I'm the property owner next door, I wouldn't want somebody coming onto my property just to paint.
Right.
Because it's their property, it's not our property.
Okay.
So it's sort of a sticky situation.
But it, because it's unsightly, it really does look kind of like an abandoned house there. And it looks like this fence was probably on your property and got taken down. That, that's what I'm thinking. So if you could just check into that.
I'll, I'll look into it. I'll see if they can talk to the property owner next door.
Does he have permission to paint?
Yeah, no.
I'd be happy if somebody offered to paint my house for free.
Also, it's, you know, it's, it is a large expense to paint somebody else's property, you know.
No, but it's only a little area.
I know, but you can't just do it, a little area, it'll look, then it'll look silly, then the top won't, won't match up to the bottom.
It's white. It's painted with white paint.
Well, I'll talk about it with everybody, you know, it's not, you know, I'm sure you've hired painters, you know, they don't, they don't come so cheaply. But we just, did just have our building touched up, on that note, and we sent in, submitted pictures to you cleaning up our property. I'm sure you saw that we paved the parking lot since the last submission as well. And we have made great efforts to spend money on our property. So I hope that would come into consideration. Now, this is a small business owner, so to ask them to go paint the adjacent properties, owner's property, even if there's only a $2,000 or $3,000 bill associated with it, that's still, you know, 100 oil changes.
But you are, you are maintaining, though, that, that planting strip by the club.
The club maintains that. The club maintains that. They asked to put it in, and they maintain it.
But it's on their, it's on your property.
It's on our property. But the club has asked, the club has asked for it, for whatever reason, I guess they like the appearance of it, and they've asked if they can maintain it. And they do. And it's very well maintained, they take good care of it.
But, but the whole point is, this is a variance that permits a use that's not normally permitted in the district, right? And there's sort of a give-back here, maintain the property, make it look nice for the neighborhood. And so in that situation, where there's something that, sort of the blight on the side of that building seems to be caused by your user, not by the neighbor, that's kind of the problem.
Yeah, well, I don't know that. For all I know, the fence was a trespassing fence on the property, it was an adverse possession, and the fence was put onto the property, but, so I don't know. But I'll, I'll find out. I'm just trying to defend my, you know, give a little bit of approach, of perspective from a small business owner that is repairing cars. We are cognizant of the board's request. We did have spent substantial money since the last approval with the paving and with the painting. And we're going to have the lines installed, which the lines, again, are not cheap. To have a line company come out is another couple of thousand dollars, and we will be taking care of that to apply the paint and take care of that. And we are trying. I don't want the board to feel for a second that we're not. But this is sort of a prickly situation, because the fence, the wall is not our wall, so it's a sort of a go-between. I'll have, I'll ask him, I'll ask him to, yes, this will do. And I think those were all the questions the board had yesterday.
Okay. So if you could get back to us on, on that issue, and, and we'll close the hearing after that one.
Thank you.
I think there were a couple of other open issues.
Oh, there were other open issues?
I had hours of operation, and I think Commissioner Montanez may have had a question about the storage tank.
No, actually, I had, in the ninth, in the affidavit of tank removal, you gave us a site plan from 1996, which showed plantings along that residential property line.
Along the residential, that's the subject of, no, not the club, but the other side.
The other side.
Right.
It showed plantings, it showed juniper bushes.
Right, but those were not, not on the approved plans.
Well, I guess...
So it was with the tank closure, so it's, it may have been that they died, and that's why they're not there.
Well, it could have been a situation where someone at some point painted the building, then they couldn't paint below a certain point, because the juniper bushes were there. And that's why it's two-tone or something.
It may have been, yeah, it might have been. The two-tone wall, I'll find out. If we could solve the problem by talking to the neighbor next door, and maybe we can just simply paint that portion of it. And if we can't, I'll tell you.
I don't really see how you put plantings in that location anymore, though, because the garage door is very close to the property line. So I think that was actually what did away with the planter.
Perhaps.
All right, we'll find out. Give you a little more information.
And did you clarify your, your hours of op?
I'll submit those, and I don't have them in front of me, I'll submit them in the next submission, though, but they're relatively modest. It's not a 24-hour operation, it doesn't go late into the evening.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so any other questions on this? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, can you submit on the 19th?
Yes.
Sorry. Actually, can you submit on the 12th, even better?
Yes.
And for a hearing on the 25th?
Yes.
Item number five, 22984BZ, 7528 Queens Boulevard, Queens.
Good morning. I'm Troy McMarra. I'm a law clerk at Chapman Sanders, on behalf of applicant. I attended the review session yesterday, and we heard your comments regarding removing the barbed wire supports, as well as repairing and repainting those areas of the fence that needed after those removals. And applicant is happy to undertake those repairs and changes, but I ask that you please consider closing the hearing today and granting.
That's okay with me. Anyone have any comments about that? Okay, so we can do that. We can close the hearing and... Any speakers? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so we can close the hearing, so for a motion to close?
Motion to close, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And then provided that those, on condition that those issues are addressed, which will be in the resolution, we can move to grant. So for a motion to grant?
Chair, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, 17803BZ, 11402 Van Wick Expressway, Queens.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session, and I reviewed the photographs of the site. I believe your board had questions about the fence that runs along the perimeter, when, I guess, when you're looking at it from, what is it, from Linden Boulevard on the right side, it's the small little slatted fence that rests atop the brick stanchion.
Right.
I assume, assuming, again, it's the slats that are looking slightly disheveled, I think I saw when I looked at it again.
Correct.
So we're talking right now with the operator, and we're going to see, I'm sure they'll agree to replace the slats.
Great.
And we will concur with your board, but, well, I agree to do that on their behalf right now, but we'll submit that in a formal letter to your board.
Are there any other comments on this? Okay, so are there any speakers on this item? So we can close this?
Thank you.
And if you would submit that information?
Thank you.
Chair Perlmutter?
Sorry.
Motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
What date?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, decision, I'm supposed to be focusing on that stuff. So our next hearing is actually the 18th, so a decision on the 18th.
Thank you.
Item number seven, 31806BZ, 4905 Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Hello. Good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We had requested an adjournment, but I just wanted to update the board. The reason for our adjournment request is to continue to comply with the board's request to clean up the site. So far, fencing has been installed along the rear of the property. We didn't, we didn't submit the photos of that. I have them with me here today, I can pass them up after the hearing. But the fencing has been installed, as the board had requested, and then you had requested for some other tasks of housekeeping to be done around the site. Those are not yet completed, so we're working on getting those done, and we'll make a complete submission to the board when those are done. For that reason, we'd like to request an adjournment to four weeks, to allow us to have ample time, until we don't waste the board's time.
Four weeks, okay. Could we make it for December 9th, then?
That's great.
A little more, with a submission on the, on the 19th of November? Does that work?
That's, that's fine. And I would just ask the board's permission for some leeway. Should it take a few weeks, a few days longer than the November 19 submission to submit photographs, we may submit right after that, because it is around Thanksgiving time. So I could see us running into a little bit of a mix-up with people that we're working with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number eight, 7612BZ, 148 Norfolk Street, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC. Good morning.
Hi.
Hi. The applicant actually is, after conferring with staff, submitting plans and materials today, reflecting changes to the building, a somewhat reduced floor area ratio, and we were hoping to basically adjourn to the next available hearing date.
Okay. So I know you requested a hearing on 11/11, but the person...
Yeah, whatever. I see that. We'd be the only ones.
So the next available hearing, so if you submit on the 12th?
Okay.
We can have a hearing on the 25th.
Okay. Is the, is November 18th the possibility, or is that...
The calendar's really full.
It's really full. Okay, great.
It's actually pretty full on the 25th.
Understood. I appreciate it.
New cases. Item number nine, 54556BZ, 2001-2007, Williams Bridge Road, the Bronx.
Finally, something from the Bronx for the new executive director. Hi, Eric Palatnik, on behalf of Williams Bridge Road. We reviewed your comments yesterday at the review session, and I have not, I'm a little, I would like to find out more specifics about which portion of the site, I think I know that it was the portion on the right side of the site, at the rear, that's not in as good a condition as it could be in, where they have some miscellaneous goods stored back there on the right side. I'll have the owner clean up that site. I was wondering, I know that you mentioned you saw graffiti when you went out to the site. I haven't seen it on the photographs that I saw, nor when I went out there.
On the south side of the building.
Okay. We'll have that removed, and I'll have the areas around the side and the rear cleaned up. Obviously, the automotive repair shops sometimes end up using, using that space to put odds and ends that they don't really know what to do with, as is the case here, and it's unsightly. Even though it is up against a commercial building on the right, it should be much cleaner in its appearance.
Right, and on the west side, it's up against residential.
It is up against residential.
And that should be landscaped.
Yeah.
And then the, the amount of signage that you have.
I went through that this morning. I was, I heard your comment, and I matched it up. I wasn't quite sure what you were referring to. It looks like it actually went down since the last approval.
You, no, if you go to the site, you have loads of banners.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about, okay.
Oil change, you know, transit, like, all these different banners of different types of services that you provide.
We, I understand, and we do tell the owners, but unfortunately, there are operators, and as you see with this, and with the fast food establishments, you know, the operators are anxious to draw publicity and attention to their site. We will have those removed and submit photographs for you.
Okay. You are also going to correct the hours of operation in the statement of facts?
Yes.
And then, I believe Commissioner Montanez had a question about the sign, the Williams, the sign?
Right, you have a sign for a used car dealership with an address given, this is on your signage analysis, at 2007 Williams Bridge Road, which is not the site, so it's, it's like an advertising sign.
No, the site has an AKA. It's 2001 to 2007.
Well, that's not what it says.
Williams Bridge.
So I just wanted an explanation of, is this referring to something on site?
No, it's referring to onsite. If you look at the C of O and the previous approvals, it's always allowed the sale of used cars. So the 2007 is an AKA for the property that must have just somehow, you know, everybody else is obviously going by the 2001, but even if you look on our application, it's 2001 through 2007.
But is this a separate business on the site?
No, it's the same operator, it's just...
SNK and Sons?
It's sub-business of theirs, but it's the same, same operator.
Okay, well, if you could verify that it's the same site that they're talking about?
Be happy to.
Because it has a different address.
We'd be happy to address this.
Okay, any other comments on this? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so if you could make those submissions on the, sorry, 26th of November? Oh, it's the day before Thanksgiving, so I'm not sure how you want to handle that. But the next hearing is on...
That's easy.
December 9th.
December 9th, we'd be happy to.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Item number 10, 16494BZ, 84 Hugh Grant Circle, the Bronx.
Jeffrey Chester for the applicant. I believe there were just a few comments at the executive session yesterday. One had to do with graffiti. I will say that we, it's a constant problem, and I know you hear that a lot, but we did go out there in June, and even though it's a landlord responsibility, because the landlord has the entire building, we, at our own cost, painted it over. That was in June. It's, it's up, and it's up significantly again. You know, every time we, we paint it, it becomes another blank canvas, so it's, it's an ongoing, chronic problem. But we, we will paint over it again, and provide the board whatever photographs or whatever they want in terms of documentation of that. But it's something that, that's going to have, has to constantly, we have to constantly be after, and we have to constantly press our landlord to be after, because they're supposed to keep the, the rest of the building clean, the exterior, so. I think there was some question about hours of operation. The hours are as they are on, in fact, on the website, which is Monday through Thursday, 7 to 9, Friday, 8 to 9, Saturday, 9 to 5, and Sunday, 9 to 4. To the extent that's not reflected in our papers, we will do so.
And I had a question, though, about the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
I know that you had a statement about the certificate of occupancy, but it's, there's no reflection of this use after all of this time, including, and it's been a condition of approval every single time, since 2000, and the last one in 2008.
Right.
Right? So what, what's holding up the C of O real?
Well, I think, I think we did provide some documentation from the architect, the expediter. There've been a host of ongoing issues related to both our tenancy and other tenancies, and, and frankly, just a question of, you know, dropping the ball and following through on this.
Right. So, so let's say you weren't allowed to drop the ball anymore, because you've been occupying effectively illegally since the original grant in 1990, right, 1984?
Without, without, without a C of O, yeah?
Yeah, well, that's called operating illegally.
Okay.
So, so I need more information on what the open items are, very, very specifically. The only open item should be our grant, not anything else. Especially, I understand that this is a one-story building, right? And you're operating, you're occupying the entire building, is that correct?
No, that's not accurate, actually.
That's what it says in your papers. It says the club is in the entire building.
It's not accurate.
Okay.
What, what it is, is on Hugh Grant Circle there, we have most of the building, the rear of the building, we have a small, sort of narrow entrance, and then we have the rear occupation, and I believe it's a total of, of around 8,700 square feet that we have, includes two small mezzanines on either side. On either side of our entrance, there's retail stores, small retail stores.
Mm-hmm.
So, that are all part of the same building. So we don't, we don't have the whole, we don't have the whole building.
Okay, so, but what, you need to articulate what it is, what could possibly be holding up this C of O for 20 years? You know, in other words, two little retail spaces, they're holding up your C of O?
I don't believe it's, it's just, it's just the two little retail spaces. I'm going to have a representative from Lucio Roberts come up, discuss this a bit.
Hi, state your name, please. Tricia Zuccaro. There's just a host of landlord issues. The landlord right now currently, the basement, the cellar needs to be redone, there's about $70,000 worth of work. They will not issue us a building permit. Right now, we're on hold at the building department. We've taken the process as far as we can, in hopes that we would get this approval, and then we could just automatically submit remaining paperwork, get the permits, if there was any other work we needed to do, and then close those permits out. Unfortunately, it looks like because of building violations, we probably will not be able to close the permits out. So we're working with the landlord. The landlord is aware of these issues, but we're kind of at his mercy right now to work through those violations. I mean, we're pushing it.
But kind of what you're saying is, you're never going to get a C of O.
No. I mean, I hope that's not the, I hope that's not the case. That's not our intention at all. Our intention is to close those permits out and be operating legally. Unfortunately, we can only do it so much. I mean, we, we could take it upon ourselves to do those repairs, and then have some sort of landlord issue with it, but at this point, he's agreed to do that work. So right now, we're kind of relying on that agreement for him to fulfill that.
Are there repairs related to fire egress from your place? Or fire safety from your place?
No, one, there is one that's sort of fire-related. There is, I guess, the, the door that connects the cellar to, to our premises needs to be fire-rated.
So that's a door?
Yeah, it's just the door. But other than that, I don't believe that there is any other fire-related issues. And the cellar, I think the issue with the cellar, I'm not too positive about the issues with the cellar, but I believe the issues with the cellar is, is that somebody went into the cellar and created sort of an egress in the basement, knocking down little pathways, creating like an archway, and they never pulled permits for it. It's completely illegal, and so when the inspector went in there and saw this work, he wanted it to be fixed and up to code.
So what about a partial TCO?
We could probably, we could probably get a TCO, but it depends, because the, obviously[1633.75] We could probably, we could probably get a TCO, but it depends because the, obviously the Building Department wants to fix these violations. And it's, you know, it's something that's important to them. So we could probably get a TCO, but we would never maybe be able to get a permanent.
Well, TCO at least indicates legality, right?
Right.
So what if you took upon yourself to change the door to a fire-approved self-closing door and you went and you got a TCO?
Sure.
So what I'd like to see before we can move on this is that you've cleared up all the violations and issues that are related to your space, including replacing that door.
Okay, that's the only, that's the only thing, is that door.
Okay, so, and then you go to DOB and you get, you show us that the only open item is our approval.
Okay. Sure. I mean, at this point, the DOB has sort of refused to speak to us. They said that our application is on hold until we get your approval. But we could print out from the DOB open violations and show you what the open violations are and what are pertaining to our-
No, but you need to speak to DOB about getting a partial-
TCO.
Right. That's what you're going to be requesting, is partial TCO. It's a different question than what you're going to them with.
Okay.
That make sense?
I understand, I mean, I understand the problem that you have because the TCO is going to be on the entire building and they're going to look at all of those violations that have nothing to do with you. Perhaps you could sit down with either the Deputy Borough Commissioner and say, "Look, we're up against the wall here because we want to get this grant and it's contingent on whether or not we can legally occupy the space," and see if they can work with you to be able to get a TCO and look at the other violations that don't have anything to do with you and acknowledge that. That's probably your biggest hurdle, is to make sure that they understand that the violations that are currently against the building have nothing to do with you. And see if they'll work with you to do that. But I get it because the TCO is for the entire building, it's not just for your space. So that, you're going to, you know, I know it's a heavy lift, but I think, I think if you, you know, speak to somebody a little higher up on the food chain, they could probably work with you on this one.
So I'm not entirely clear as to exactly what documentation this board would like to see before we could move forward on this PCE.
Some express, some statements, some writing from the Department of Buildings about what is still open. Ideally, the only thing open is this grant with respect to the legitimate occupancy of your space, right?
Right. But I guess we can come back and tell you how our meeting with the Deputy Borough Commissioner went. If it goes well and he's willing to issue, that's great. But if he's not, then I may just have to come back and say, "This is the position of the Buildings Department."
So what if this was-
And we're stuck between-
What if this was in the form of you asking for essentially like a CCD-1 or an interpretation that says, "We occupy this area. You show plans, we occupy this area, someone else occupies this area, this area is controlled by the landlord, we have clear egress, we have, you know, sprinklers, everything is protected in the root of egress for our, the people who are using our space, and we would like to sign this space off so that we can get some kind of DOB approval if it's a partial TCO." I thought they used to issue partial TCOs. Not anymore, okay. So some kind of approval for, to acknowledge that you can legitimately occupy this space because it's kind of serious.
We'll, you know, we'll, look, we want to work with the board. It's obviously, we want to legalize the space. We'll go back to the Buildings Department and report back depending on what they say to us.
Right. You could request an inspection and get an inspection report.
Okay. That we could do.
And see if they will give you a report just of your space saying that egress, fire safety, everything that's on your plan is, you know, is as it should be. And I think maybe that might satisfy us to know that at least the Building Department took a look at it and knew that your space was up to snuff.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public on this? Okay. So we can, I don't know how much time you're going to, you're probably going to need some time on this, maybe a month, something like that.
I would think, at least.
Or at least.
Yeah.
Inspection, two months, something like that. Are we good with that? So the next hearing in December is, the last hearing in December is the 16th, otherwise we move into January. What's your preference?
I mean, we could put it on for December 16th. If we haven't gotten there, what I'll do is I'll communicate with staff and I'll just say, "We're not there yet, we need a couple more weeks."
So if, in that case, because you're just going to be submitting some kind of documentation about your contact with DOB and maybe even a letter from DOB, something. So if you could submit that on December 10th for a hearing on the 16th.
And in your conversation, if the Building Department is willing to issue the TCO, terrific. But if they're not, you know, go for the inspection and get the inspection report.
Okay.
Item, item number 11, 19502BZ, 2797 Linden Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Jeffrey Chester for the applicant. I know there were some questions on this application as well yesterday. I have someone here from McDonald's to discuss the issue of the noise buffering. When we, when the McDonald's was first put in in 1972, those residences weren't there. I don't know how recent they are, but they're relative recent to McDonald's, 40-some-odd year occupancy. And, you want to come on? We also have, there's also a buffering, if you look at the pictures, there's a buffering and there's a wood picket fence that separates the drive-through from the adjacent residences.
Could you state your name for the record?
Thomas Kelly.
You were going to talk about-
Oh, the drive-through system? The drive-through system that we put in three years ago, it adjusts volume by time period. So after 8:00 at night, the volume is down to a 3, where it's just the car and the speaker, it buffers out all the noise around us. So the residents don't get affected by this. It's a 3M system, it's the latest system. All restaurants are using with drive-throughs now, and it's required when you're within, I guess, 100 feet of a residence.
So it's adjusted by time, but not by ambient noise or anything else?
It buffers out all the noise around the restaurant, so if it's like really loud, it goes low. And if it's quiet, well, I'm sorry, if it's really loud, it picks up the volume.
Higher, right.
And if it's really quiet, it lowers it down.
So, and it's at 8:00 PM that it-
It goes from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
8:00?
8:00 PM at night to 7:00 AM, it buffers.
When you say buffers, what do you mean by buffer? The sound itself is-
It's adjusted through the sound outside.
Ah, okay.
So if it's, if it's, like I said, if it's really loud outside, it goes higher. And if it's quiet, the volume goes lower.
Okay, so that means if you have somebody who drives up with a lot of rowdy partiers, then it's louder.
So, yeah, so we can hear, so they can hear us. The drive-through is a 44% drive-through in sales, so it's not like, the average McDonald's does 55%. So it's only 44% drive-through.
The drive-through is open all night long?
Yes, 24 hours.
I believe that wasn't, I think that was not the hours of operation previously approved.
I have to, I'd have to take a look at the resolution, the previous resolution.
I thought it was, my understanding that it was closing at midnight. So the restaurant and the drive-through are open 24 hours?
No. Just the drive-through is open 24 hours. It's been that way for 18 years.
Oh.
Well, I handled this renewal last time I was personally, and I thought we had asked for 24 hours because, particularly because there's a movie theater across the street and a little further down, and we certainly wanted to capture that post-movie volume, which was going to be important. And I don't think anyone had a problem. If it's not on the resolution, I'm not sure why.
Okay. You're asking for a removal of the term also.
Ideally, yes. We were asking for removal of the term under the theory that the board doesn't really issue use variances for terms anymore. And we've been here for 42 years, and we've never had one problem with the community board or the local neighbors or anyone else.
Did you notify the local neighbors for this hearing, for this case?
I did the notification that's required under the SLC calendar.
Well, I would think possibly to consider removal of the term, the adjacent neighbors should be notified to see if there are any noise issues.
Okay.
Or concerns.
I, we'd be glad to do that if the board indicated it's something that they would be willing to consider.
Well, we're being asked to consider it, so we need to have that information, right?
Understood.
To understand that we're not imposing on the neighbors in a way that's not satisfactory. That maybe they, you know, the purpose of the term is so that effectively we can check up on you, right?
Well, that's generally the purpose of terms with the special permit, and I understand that. But it hasn't been, although it has historically in the past, this board has occasionally issued term conditions with variances, but that has fallen out of favor, I think, over the last many, many years.
Also, the trash receptacle is adjacent to the residential, and what are the hours of pickup of the trash?
I'm told that the pickup is three evenings a week. Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday, somewhere around 9:00, not exactly, it could be between 8:00 and 10:00. What happens is a compactor. What happens is that the company that does the trash removal comes in and removes the compactor completely and replaces it with another compactor, which they then pick up at the next pickup.
But you can give us an affidavit that all the pickup is before 10:00 PM?
We can.
And I'm not sure if I brought it up or Commissioner Otley-Brown brought it up. You have banners, additional signage along the back.
I don't think, I don't think the operator was aware that, unfortunately, some of them are not aware that that actually constitutes signage under the New York City zoning resolution. That will be removed.
And just for clarification, I was looking at your previous, the previous grants. In 1972, you were at 11:00 AM to midnight. It seemed to be silent on that fact in your 2002 to 2003 grant, but it is referenced? So you might want to take a look at that and address, you know, your hours of operation.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so if you could, okay, in order for us to, really, for us, we can consider this, though, yes?
We can consider it. We can consider the request. I think the most important thing for you to show is that your drive-through actually predated the requirement for a special permit for accessory drive-throughs. You said it was existing even before residences were in the area. Perhaps it predates the zoning resolution provision on accessory drive-throughs. You could potentially make this a special permit for the accessory drive-through and eliminate the term for the variance, but that would have to be demonstrated as appropriate.
So, let me understand what you're suggesting. You're suggesting we wouldn't, we wouldn't come back for the variance-
For the use.
For the use variance every 10 years or whatever.
Potentially, depending on what the impacts are.
Potentially. But instead, we would come back for a special permit for the drive-through?
Right, every drive-through in the city is required.
Right. Which, I mean, frankly, practically speaking, it's the same difference. The issue becomes going through the expense and the procedure of coming back every 10 years. It doesn't really net much in terms of my clients' costs, et cetera, to switch it up from a variance renewal to a, to a special permit renewal, particularly because the use is established pursuant to variance, is continuing pursuant to variance, so there would be no reason to-
And the special permit is every five years, I might add, so.
Right, and the special permit is every five years, so it actually makes the situation worse.
Anyway, you can explore the request for the removal of the term, but it's unlikely.
Okay, that was advice of counsel.
Well, then, on advice of counsel, I think we would withdraw their request.
Okay, so I think at this point, we're just talking about you submitting backup material to respond to the questions, right? Right, there's nothing that you have to research at this point. That's just submitting backup response in your statement of facts, correct? Okay. So I think we can then, and you will remove the banners prior to our-
Yes, and we can provide photographic evidence of that.
Okay, that'd be great. So then, you could make those corrections and then the issue of the hours of operation.
Hours of operation, they may need an amendment to increase the hours of operation.
Right, okay, so maybe we can't close. Okay. Okay, so then, let's schedule this for a hearing on December 9th-
Okay.
With submission on the 19th of November.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, item number 12, 8914A, 215 East 64th Street, Manhattan.
For, okay, with this one, we're going to take it off the calendar to allow time to allow the, for the applicant to address fire safety issues. So there's no adjournment date, it's just off calendar.
Item number 13, 10614A, 84 William Street, Manhattan.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Nick Williams. I'm a law clerk at Greenberg Chorig for the applicant.
For a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 14214A, 92 Fulton Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, Eric Knowles of Goldman Harris for the applicant.
For a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 23514A, 4020 Atlantic Avenue, Brooklyn.
Joseph Jabour, applicant.
My question, though, which I don't know that we talked about in the review session, was just in reviewing the drawings, you have a 15-foot front yard, and the zoning regulations require that there be an 18-foot front yard when you have parking space in front.
It's not considered a parking space, and that zoning regulation, believe it or not, I have a meeting at 12:00 with Neil Ladler about this, is, it's in front of the building line. We're not in, we're not within the, the street side of the building line. We're parking inside underneath the house. Parking is strictly underneath the house. We're not asking for a parking space there, so. The code does say 18 feet if you will have parking in front of the house, but from the street side of the building wall, it's pretty specific. That's why it's 15 feet.
Okay, and then the only other thing is that the front yard mitigation measures that are required when you raise the house, that you should include those.
What we're, we're going to do exactly what we had shown on that. That was also an objection with DOB, so.
Right, there is, okay. 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 Are there any other comments on this? Are there any speakers on this item?
The record is, the record's-
Oh, the record, sorry.
It's on for decision.
Oh. What?
It's on for decision.
I have this as, which one is this?
2314?
But this is for decision?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so confused. All right. Okay, then, so for a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Yeah, I put it down in new cases.
Oh, okay, sorry.
New cases, item number 16, 6114A, 11 Massachusetts Street South.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Firm review session, actually, discussion with staff prior. We know there were a couple of outstanding issues. First, yesterday, we submitted a better copy of the survey. The electronic copy was pretty poor. It's a cleaner copy's been submitted, and the hard copy's be submitted today. Second, there was a letter from the Fire Department regarding the width of the proposed paved width of Massachusetts Street South in front of the property. It was previously shown as 20 feet. We are submitting plans, we did yesterday, increasing it to 30 feet, not only in front of the property in question, but the full extent, including the home that's not part of the application. So everything from that property north is going to be 30-foot width, which will then comply with the Fire Department code. Buildings are going to be fully sprinkled. The revised plans do have a note regarding the sprinkling and the code section of the Fire Department cited.
Okay, but those plans were submitted-
Yesterday electronically, hard copy today.
Okay, so, so since there's no way that we can review things that were submitted yesterday and today in time for a review on the hearing, so we have to put this on for the next hearing so we can review and the Fire Department can comment, okay?
Understood. Would it be possible, though, assuming that there are no issues, that we could do a closing grant on the next hearing date? We could do that?
Yeah, it's possible. Okay. So the submission has to be, the electronic submission and the hard copy submission, I don't know when you're exactly doing that, if you're doing it today, but in any event, the next available hearing for this could be the 25th of November?
That should be fine. I mean, we're submitted, I don't know how quickly the Fire Department will get, will get back. Maybe the first one in December, just to give the Fire Department a little more time.
Okay, so then the 9th of December?
Sure.
Okay, and then submission, well, we're waiting for Fire Department, you've already made your submission, I assume.
Right, and if, assuming everyone is satisfied, if we could do the closing grant, December 9th, we agree.
Okay. Oh, I didn't ask about speakers. Are there any speakers on this item? Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 10914A, 44 Marjory Street, Staten Island.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session.
Yeah.
We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard your board's comments. Start with the condition of the site. The applicant is an HVAC company that purchased the site, and they purchased it from the current occupant, who still has their goods and junk and all sorts of other stuff on the property. Property is a manufacturing zoning district, and they use it for the storage of their goods and materials. They will be vacating the property once we secure approval from the board and start a filing process at Department of Buildings, although it looks like junk to you. To me, it is somebody else's belongings that do not belong to us, and we would like the opportunity to remove them, but subsequent to the board's approval, if that would be acceptable to the board.
So why does it have to be subsequent to...
It's not, we don't, we, when we purchased, when our client purchased the property, they left in place the current, the previous owner stayed in place, the condition of the deal was that upon the approval from the board, they would remove their items from the property. So the property, the stuff that's on the property right now that you're seeing belongs to the previous owner, yes. It's their stuff, and I realize it looks sort of ramshackle, and it is, but that's how they've been using the property in the manufacturing zoning districts for however many years. But we will clean it up. We have the intentions to invest tons of money into the property, and we'll remove all of those materials once we receive approval from the board. We're going to start construction immediately.
Is this going to be one or two businesses here?
One business. It's an HVAC.
There's a dividing line?
Yes, they have two different companies.
A, B...
They have a plumbing supply company, and they also have an HVAC company.
Well, the plumbing supply company is the current tenant, it's Highland Pipe Supply.
Well, that's one of the companies, yes, but the new company that's coming in there is also plumbing supply and an HVAC company as well, and they'll be occupying the building.
All right.
That's why it's divided into two sides, for each side of the business.
I had a question about, you're listing it as a warehouse, which is parking requirement category G, and I had a question regarding whether the parking waiver in Use Group 16 applied to PRCG.
Oh, so that...
So, I mean, you don't have to answer now, but...
You're questioning whether or not the Section 4423, the waiver that's allotted in there, would apply to the warehouse use?
Right, because if you read on to 44231B, it states that the waiver does not apply to PRCG in Use Group 16, which lists storage and warehouse. So, you know, what you're saying now is it might be a contractor's yard, I'm not sure if that's handled differently.
I'll speak...
But my concern is that the Fire Department flatly stated, there can be no parking on the site, and they want you to provide this 30-foot turnaround. So I was just wondering if it was possible to have parking in the warehouse, or how will you...
I don't think we need, we're not required to have the parking, so then it'd be on-street parking, you know, around it.
Well, that's a question if you're required to have parking around it.
No, and I'll find out. It's, up until now, we were of the belief we didn't, but now you're raising this point, so we'll go back and we'll research it now that I understand the question, and I'll get back to the board with a thorough answer.
It's very use-related.
Of course, it's directly related to the use, so...
But with respect to that, the parking, the Fire Department comments, talk about no parking anytime on the subject property, but there's this 30 by 30 area that's specifically referred to as the frontage space. Are we talking about a no parking anytime in the frontage space or on the entire property? I think we need, we need...
Clarification?
Clarification on that. Unfortunately, they're not here right now.
Okay, no, but we'll find out.
Okay. So then those two rectangles that are shown are really on the plans, those are really the drive-up for the truck before it goes into the loading dock or the...
Correct, those are the loading berths that you're seeing.
Loading berths?
Well, the loading area where they'll be driving, area where they'll be driving into the loading berth.
Right, right, so they might be stopped there.
Right, so I guess a panel van could be out front while one's inside or walkers are inside.
Right, so that would constitute parking, right?
Yes, they're calling it, he's calling it a loading berth, the architect.
Right, but there's still, there's garage doors, so you're obviously taking the truck inside when you can, and so the Fire Department has prohibition against parking on the entire site. I don't really understand how that...
How that interacts with the loading berth, if that's what they're speaking, so we'll speak to the Fire Department, find out.
Right.
I understand your question.
Okay. Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so if you could submit on the November 19th for a hearing on December 9?
We'd be happy to, thank you.
Zoning calendar, decision items, item number 184814BZ, 174 Fowlmouth Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, this item needs to be reopened to address some comments from Commissioner Oatley-Brown. I'm sorry, Commissioner Montanez.
Motion to reopen?
Aye.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
So previously, I had mentioned the zoning regulations section regarding balconies, which exist in the front yard, and the way I see this balcony on these plans is that it doesn't comply in two ways. One is that the maximum depth of the balcony is supposed to be 6 feet, and yours is 7 feet 8 inches, and the balcony is to be unenclosed except for a railing or a parapet wall. And this balcony has the roof extending with eaves past the maximum depth of the balcony into the front yard, so it's actually maybe, I don't know, 5 feet away from the front property line. And at the roof level, and this is a home in the floodplain, so it's raised, so this structure is actually about 45 feet in the air, about 5 feet from the...
We're going to remove it.
Okay.
We're going to remove it.
Removing the balcony, that was...
No, no, we're keeping the balcony, we're removing the roof.
The roof.
The roof portion, yes. The architect, we got the message, your examiner contacted us ahead of time.
And the balcony cannot extend into the front yard more than 6 feet?
More than 6 feet. The architect is trying to get it revised today to save the decision, but he didn't have time to get to it, so...
Okay.
But your examiner was very thorough in communicating your request.
Okay. So since we reopened, are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so we can reclose, but then you'll submit that material?
Yes.
Right, okay. So for motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Okay, so if you could submit those materials by the 19th of November for a decision on the 9th of December?
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 1934312BZ, 570 East 21st Street, Brooklyn.
Is there anyone from the applicant here on this? Okay, so the applicant has asked for this to be adjourned, so just to set up the submission hearing, because there's also opposition on this, so the applicant can submit their materials on November 5th. Opposition to submit on November 19th. The applicant's response on December 2nd, and for the hearing on December 16th.
Item number 2017613BZ, 31 Bond Street, Manhattan.
Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC, for the applicant. Madam Chair, we had a representative at the executive session. We got the board's comments, which recognized that we'd submitted new materials, and there were some meaty comments. We had an extensive call internally yesterday and would prefer the opportunity to respond with a detailed submission. We would ask for four weeks, submission date on November 25th, and a hearing date thereafter, if that was acceptable by the board.
Okay, yes. Okay, so submission, what did you say, on the 20?
25th.
25th, okay, for a hearing on the 16?
The 9th, if possible.
The 9th.
Giving two weeks?
9th is possible.
Okay.
As long as it's not too meaty of a submission.
No, no, it's gonna, I mean, it'll respond discreetly to the board's points.
Okay, and I just want you to know, there's a little bit of buzz out there on the sale of units on the former hotel building that's being converted to residential.
Okay.
You know, right on bond, and so prices are out there on the street.
Right, okay.
So please take those into account.
Understood, thank you.
Item number... I'm sorry. Item number 218-14BZ, 1824 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Lyra J. Altman from the office of Lyra J. Altman. I did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. We will be providing a rear yard study as requested yesterday. In addition, we will be removing the garage and the porch and the rear yard from the plan as requested by your board.
Okay, will it be removed from the project?
It is being removed from the project, yes.
So there's no garage to park in, they'll be parking on the...
We'll put a parking pad.
Parking pad.
Right, we're required to have a parking space of 8 by 18, and we'll certainly be providing that, of course.
Okay.
Regarding amassing study, we had provided some information on other buildings in the area that were of a similar FAR to what we're requesting, and I would just request some guidance as to what additional information your board would like in amassing study, which we'd be glad to provide you.
Okay, so I'll get this one right. So the idea is, amassing study, the idea is that what you've been doing so far has been submitting examples of some houses in the area that are, have larger FARs, right?
Right.
But the thing is, what we're talking about is the block in question, you know, what is the impact of this building on this block, not what's been going on in lots of other blocks, because each block you read as a discrete experience, and that you haven't addressed that, okay? And then the other part...
Understood.
Sorry? I'm sorry. The other part of that is, in terms of the architect's drawing, in order for us to better understand the actual mass, because I have to say that, of course, we know that in elevation, everything sort of collapses, and you look at roof plans, and you see strange large dormers, and it's very hard to see what's going on.
Of course, and sometimes they're set back very far, and it doesn't give you the right impression.
The way that the architect did the axonometric, he was literally a bird flying right over the top. That's not really how you display, you know...
I understand completely.
Okay.
You'd like to see it more of a 45-degree angle.
Yes, but it's also maybe more than one drawing, so we see it from the front and from the rear and from the side, so we understand what's going on, right? You're trying to tell the story of this building.
So more than one angle and a better angle.
And then in terms of the streetscape photo montage, the way that the architect did it is they took an elevation and just sort of dropped it into the streetscape, which does an injustice, actually, to the design, because the design is in fact 3D, just like all of the other buildings in that photograph. So once he does the axonometric, maybe that's a way, but frankly, no, that doesn't really work. So frankly, he's going to need to use a perspective, which is the way the photographs work. The rendered perspective tells the story, trying to sell the building, right?
Understood.
And in terms of...
As you're aware, this is a new request from the board, we're just trying to feel out exactly what your board would like, and we're happy to provide.
Okay, and, you know, it'll take a little time to get up to speed, but this is standard language of architects, so... And then with respect to the rear yard studies, again, that's actually standing in the backyard taking pictures, or standing on top of the house and taking pictures of the rear yard, if there's a house. I don't know what the status of the house is.
There's a house, but it has an angled roof. I would strongly discourage anybody from standing on it.
No standing on the roof of the house, but standing in the backyard taking pictures.
We could take pictures from the backyard, certainly.
Okay, and the idea really is, you're pulling back so far into the rear, what is the effect on the adjoining property? What's the condition of the donut, the green space on the center? Because if this is the first house that's reducing the size of the donut, then you have to ask, why is that okay to be impacting so dramatically the green space of neighbors who, historically, that's what zoning has been about in New York City, have relied on the other neighbor also having green space, so that you get a distance of 60 feet from house to house? And there has to be a good reason for this, and if, I know you've been here during hearings where we have variances, where applicants request to have 20-foot rear yard on variances, and they're mostly not granted, so...
Correct, but this is not a variance. This is a special permit that specifically says you can request up to a 20-foot rear yard.
You can request, but you don't automatically get, right? You have to make a case. So that's what this is about. Okay, and...
And as far as the homes that we cited, there was a question, somebody mentioned about the legality of two of them, and as far as I'm aware, there's no questions to the legality of any of the homes that were cited to your board.
Um...
I was very careful about that in submitting those.
There were two that didn't have, didn't mention that they were BSA cases, so it didn't say whether they were pre-existing.
That means that they were pre-existing. If I, if there are no prior BSA cases, what I do is I check for violations to prove or prior work. There was no work done on either of those sites, and there's actually a note on the bottom of that page, or there should have been, I apologize if I didn't put it there.
Okay, maybe I didn't see it.
That, what I do is I check if there are any violations on the site, if there's been any work done. If there's been no work done and no violations on the site, we can only presume that, of course, the building is legal.
Okay.
So that was done on those.
Okay. Thank you.
You reduced the width of the, the depth of the front porch, but you didn't change the dimension. It still shows 6 feet when, actually, in order to comply with the landscape, I think you reduced it to maybe 3 or 4 feet.
Okay.
And then if the architect could look at the second floor, he calls it a porch, but it's really a balcony, and you have to have a complying front yard on the second floor, even though you have a non-complying front yard on the first floor.
Of course.
So just if he could look through zoning section 23131 and make sure that everything there complies, you know, there's a certain height of the parapet wall, whether, I think you have a trellis up there.
That's correct. I will confirm, I believe we did double-check, but I will confirm it one more time, just to make sure for your board.
Okay.
And leave those were all the comments from yesterday.
I think I had asked you to take a look at the peak?
The ceiling rafter and roof rafter.
Yeah.
I spoke with the architect regarding that, he's going to look into that. He does not yet have an answer for me on that.
And that kind of goes into the amassing. It's not just to show us the amassing, it's also to reduce the mass.
He did reduce the amassing slightly, the front wall, the front of the building, the roof line went from this to this, there was a change in an effort, but unfortunately, as you said, some of the angles of the photo, of the drawings perhaps didn't show that well to your board.
In future, though, when you're showing very slight changes, was it impossible to figure out what changed?
I believe I mentioned it on my first paragraph of my letter.
You mentioned, but you don't see it. I mean, if you're going to show a change, maybe dash in where it was and where it is, that way...
I can ask the architect to show a dashed line of the change.
Right, so we can see that there's a little movement there, but still, the dormers are much larger than they need to be, and the roof is, could probably be reduced, and the size of the attic could be reduced, because again, there's a huge amount of unoccupied attic space, which makes the building look more massive. But a lot of that is in part, a lot of my reaction is in part because I can't tell what the impact of the house is on the neighborhood, right?
Understood, we'll be glad to provide that other study. Now that I hear precisely what your board would like, I'd be glad to provide it.
Thank you. Okay, are there any speakers on this item? Okay. So, and just in future, also in terms of submissions, I don't know if it was this one or another one.
It was this case, I submitted, unfortunately, the area study for some reason was not going through on the email. So when it was not going through on the email, I actually brought a CD in yesterday and I do apologize for that delay.
But we need to receive these really the fully two weeks before the hearing.
I believe this was received two weeks ago.
And the electronic submission is as important as the hard copy?
Understood.
Okay, simultaneous submissions, otherwise, it's not being reviewed and it does you a disservice.
Understood.
So if we could get a submission on this on the eighteenth of November, with the hearing on the ninth of December, does that work?
I believe that does work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, seventeen dash fourteen BZ, 600 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. First of all, I have... I feel like it's after now, about five o'clock, so... First of all, I have to apologize on the DOT and DEP submissions, they were ready. And Jim thought I was submitting it and I thought Jim was submitting it. And so somehow, they were submitted, they were emailed to staff already last night, we got a, and we have copies of it, and Jim is here if you have any questions on that. We did review again the last hearing, and we went it over, my wife goes it over like three times, to make sure that we answer everything. And I believe the three things that were there, we did answer. We gave a new design for the building. I don't know if it was, if you didn't get, if the copy didn't come through electronically, I can, I would bring them. Two, the structural report, which was submitted. Three was the garbage. Now, Jim can speak about the garbage, but the garbage enclosure, according to the CEQR technical manual, is one pound per student, per week. We have approximately twelve hundred pounds capacity, which is almost double what is required. But we have no problem with the board putting in the resolution, all the garbage to be kept in an enclosure. If it's too small, they'll have to make it bigger. That's not a problem. We just did the calculations and sort of doubled it, just to make sure that it's twenty-two feet long.
Are these compacters? It's a very small area that you've got.
Twenty-two feet by eight feet, so we're talking about...
But are these compacters as opposed to trash cans?
Not trash cans.
Because we weren't given any of that, right?
No, this you weren't, because this is what we used our calculations on, and those are the containers that we designed around, that we figured either for, two ten footers.
So, so you're saying, and you, isn't there food cooked on site?
But that, the way the CEQR technical manual tells us to do it, is for a parochial school, for private school, it's one pound per square foot.
How many students are there?
It's a thousand students.
A thousand students. And you put the trash of a thousand students in two of these.
That's what the CEQR technical manual tells us.
Also, I suggest talking to somebody who's a sanitation expert, rather than the secret technical manual, because that's not going to hold, you could just tell, a big party for a few, with a lot of friends would pull up.
This is not only one, we're talking about many of these containers, this room.
How many?
Two ten footers.
They're six feet long each, right?
Not only, no, they're ten footers.
Well, these are all showing six feet.
No, that's the depth.
No. Forty-one by seventy-two.
Question, is that, would you be filling two of those per day? Is that what you're anticipating?
Well, the...
Or is it like over a couple of days?
Over, the trash collection twice a week.
That's not going to hold a thousand students' worth of garbage for like two times a week?
We, the only thing we could use is the CEQR technical manual. If the board has anything else, we'll make it bigger. That's not a problem. We specifically placed it along the commercial wall, and the neighbor on the right told us he's fine and we can get letters from him.
And you'll have foodstuffs in this, so, right? So you're going to have real garbage that's going to be degrading.
Yeah, but it's collected twice a week.
I, well, twice a week is, you know, maybe once on Monday and then once on Friday. But the thing of it is, is that during that span, it's going to get smelly. And have you thought about perhaps refrigerating some of this?
That would actually be a situation...
You know what? I'll talk to them, we can change the plan to put a refrigerated area in the building to hold the food, the food stuff, right?
I think so, you've only had two pickups in the week. You're going to have significant smells come Tuesday and Wednesday.
Not a problem. Well, so we'll put it in to the resolution, and I'll put it on the plan that the refrigerated, that the food stuff should be kept in the building, refrigerated, or in a cooler spot. And the paper garbage, which is most of the garbage, is going to be over here, to be kept outside.
You know, I think, did you want to say something else?
That's exactly what I was going to say, is that it should be in refrigerated storage in the building.
No problem.
I didn't, you're planning on having a pickup on Day Hill?
That's where the pickup is today, and it's the only place... Because it's a very, the street on McDonald Avenue is where the train comes out.
I just feel that it's, you know, it's a residential block and I feel it's a...
No, we're right next to, it's being picked up right next to the commercial spot.
And your plan is actually for fifteen hundred students, not a thousand?
Right.
And it's, I found the trash designated area hundreds of feet away from the cafeteria or the kitchen. And it didn't seem practical to like carry all this stuff through the school to put into the dumpsters.
They don't have much...
You know, I just felt that pickup on McDonald would be less intrusive to the residential block.
Why, why would you...
It's very narrow. It's very narrow, the train comes up over there. That's not a really good spot. I can have it pick, we can ask the city if they would like to pick it up at McDonald, but I think the city would rather. Dale is a very wide road. And it just, I mean, either way, it comes out into that underground yard and go front or back, so...
Well, on that, that little spur, one side is commercial, right? The other side is a residential property.
Which we have permission from the neighbor, and I can get letters from him. It happens to be enough yeshiva. So they spoke, we spoke to them, and he actually was here at the last hearing, and he's in favor.
So, so here's the thing. I think one, you know, secret technical manual has a certain purpose, right? But it's a different thing than what we deal with in the rest of the application process. We're dealing with certain kinds of practicalities, right? And you're getting your guidance from a place that's not dealing with sort of general maintenance practicalities and how a school is operated. And the idea that you actually don't know how much garbage is produced by a school, never mind the secret technical manual, indicates clearly that what's missing from a lot of this application is an expert in school design. You're just kind of throwing together something. And it's very evident from what the materials we're reading, which is one reason why we said that your materials aren't ready. So, I mean, a school of this scale needs to be designed by someone who is an expert in designing schools for a thousand to fifteen hundred children. And so far, you know, that drawing that you provided, which indeed we got, was not at all what we had discussed. We discussed you, that for one, you showed a photograph at the last hearing of a six-hundred foot long terrifying building. And, and we talked about how, that's a school, and we talked about how that moment in architecture of school design was not something we wanted to emulate.
Right.
And we talked about how instead, that there were other examples where you showed quite a pretty school that was built, I don't know when that was, in the nineteen fifty's or something like that, that actually had really nice amassing, and it was lifted up on columns the way you're proposing. And instead, and we also talked about how, this is a six-hundred foot long structure, which really needs to be broken down en masse, so that it's not an imposition that looks like a prison on, in this neighborhood. And so what do you give us? Something that looks just like, except that it's not blue tile or blue concrete block, the scary project. So, so this is a thing.
We...
We're trying to have a positive impact on the neighborhood, not a negative impact. This would be a negative impact on the neighborhood.
I respectfully disagree. I really respectfully, I think this came out very nice. I can get more designs, we'll pull in some more people, we pulled in experts into this. To get more designs, and you can choose which design the board likes better, that's not a problem. But this person does a lot of work. Between my father and myself, over forty years, we've designed over five hundred schools. And we've been, and we've been doing this for the Orthodox community for years and years and years.
So then why don't you know how much trash is created by fifteen hundred students?
Because we don't get into the trash. We look at what the city tells us, which is the CEQR technical manual. We can use the public school, which is four pounds, and so we'll get a little bit more, that still complies, because it's fifteen hundred students, seven hundred and fifty pounds per pickup, and we have enough room to put that in. I can double it, that's not a problem. I mean, this is a small, it's there in the yard, I just put, I thought was overkill. And, and I, if I use the, I'll use the public school in the CEQR tactical manual, which says four, I think it's four pounds. Four pounds, Jim would know, I'll, Jim come up. He's our expert, he's our environmental expert, and I, we spoke, and this is what we came up with. So I'm not, it's not like we're coming out of left field over here. We need guidance. If the board wants us to double it, we'll double it, that's not a problem.
Okay, I mean, it, so the thing is, it's not that the board is an expert in school design, there's supposed to be a school design expert who talks about programmatic requirements. Normally, that's what we see, we see programmatic requirements, we see this number of students needs a classroom this big to handle these kinds of functions, and that's what justifies all that floor area, right? And in addition to which, there's always a portion that talks about the size of the kitchen, the size of the trash collection, that there's compacters, you're not even proposing a trash compactor. I mean, just to talk about trash, which is just one small element of this gigantic building. And so, and then in the conversation that we had about dividing up the building, so that it is not, how is this divided? There's some divisions on the top, and that's what your neighbors are going to be looking at.
Correct.
Right?
So this is, we, it is vertically divided, in order to be able to separate. Plus, the top, the top floor is, we changed the whole top floor, we took a...
That's true. Okay, so let's just say it's not cutting the mustard. The, what we talked about was a subdivision of the mass, not decoration, right? So you haven't subdivided the mass, so that the building doesn't look like it's six hundred feet long. It looks like a six hundred foot long building, and feels like one, and is imposing, and by the way, your ground floor that doesn't have any windows on it, I mean, you're basically walking for six hundred feet past a blank wall.
We're not changing the ground floor, the ground, it's only the top two floors. It's an existing building. They can't kick the girls out, I can, what does the board want? Should I get a thousand little girls here, come in and align down Reed Street, begging you for a school?
No, it's not to beg for a school, it's to give, it's to...
Breathe, breathe.
Right.
Breathe, breathe.
You know what?
It's not about begging for a school, it's about please, considering the impact of your structure on the neighborhood, on the neighbors, on the people who come. And, and just to think about this, that photograph that you showed, you showed two photographs. One was, we discussed this, you agreed, it wasn't a good-looking building, it was a bad idea when that was built, right? And then the other one that you showed, was actually quite a nice collection of forms. Use that, channel that. But if that, if you're not up to the task, then hire somebody who is. That's, that's what I want to say. It's too huge of a project, huge impact on the neighborhood, which brings us also to the subject of buses. Right? Huge impact on the neighborhood, lots and lots of buses already there in your photographs, and then you're going to be adding to that. How is, what's the traffic impact, how is that going to be handled?
We'll have Jim speak.
Good morning, James Heinemein, Equity Environmental Engineering. With regard to the traffic issue, as we know, the site is currently accommodating a thousand students, the proposed addition of the additional floors, that number goes up to fifteen hundred, a fifty percent increase. So in terms of generating, looking at traffic and busing and pedestrian impacts and such like that, it's a relatively straightforward process of gathering data on how the current students travel to school, the current staff, and because we are at the same grade levels, it's not like we now have a middle school and a high school. We know, basically, it's just more of the same, so I think it's reasonable to think that the transportation characteristics of the existing school will basically just multiply everything by one and a half, and that tells you what you're looking at. As far as the bus parking overlay issues, this, right now, the school has a school no standing, seven AM to seven PM school days for almost the entire length of the block. There's an MTA bus stop at the north end, at the south end, everything in between, over seven hundred feet of a school no standing zone expressly for the use of the school for loading and unloading buses. We know that, looking at the way the buses are now, we would have, I think, an additional three buses beyond what we have now. I think they, they, you know, in some cases, depending on the routes, you have the same, a same bus making multiple, as they'll drop off and then they'll do for later kids, because the arrival and departure times are somewhat staggered, we can get you all the details about that, it's actually in the material we submitted yesterday. But, let's say, with over seven hundred feet of school loading zone available to the school, there is ample curbside space for the buses. And really, except for a window, a home improvement, you know, window showroom at the southern end of the block, this school is the only thing going on in the block. Across the street, you have the subway structure, this, we're talking about McDonald now, not Day Hill. You know, across the street is just the subway superstructure as it goes from below ground to above ground, and then there's us on our side. So we really do not have any neighbors across the street on McDonald Avenue, it's more or less there. We are pretty much the only users of this portion of the block, and we certainly have the curbside capacity to hold the existing buses and several more. I mean, obviously, it does, you know, you do see a long row of buses, that's clearly what's going on there, but that's the, you know, we are the use on the block.
Will you be extending the bus parking or bus standing zone then? Are you asking for that?
We have not, we have not been asked to do that. We believe that, as I said, with, I think seven hundred and twenty-four is the exact number of feet, you know, you have, the buses are not more than about forty-five feet in length, so depending on how good they are parallel parking, clearly, holding ten or more buses is not an issue in this area. And then, you know, they overnight, they don't, they park their, they can lay over during the day, at night, they can go into a parking garage, which is what they do now.
Where's the parking garage?
Their garage, or is it, they pull into the schoolyard or?
What schoolyard?
I'm basing this on information we got from the, from the school about their current operations that they...
Because there's no schoolyard anymore to pull into.
Okay, well, we'll clarify what they meant when they said that they garage them at night, if they, if they use a local garage, we can certainly...
Could you explain exactly sort of the operation in the morning and in the afternoon? I'm concerned that you'll have buses that might be idling for a certain amount of time if they're going to stay parked there during the entire day. What is the impact sort of on, on that block of having, you know, all of those buses? I'm concerned, you know, a bus driver is hanging out all day or whatever, and he decides, it's cold outside, so I'm going to get in the bus and I'm going to turn on the heat.
Well, it's my understanding, there's a citywide regulation prohibiting excessive idling, is it, is it three minutes or something like that? I mean, and if they're...
We know the regulation, but I'm saying, what positively can you guys do to make sure that that doesn't happen? It's sort of like, you know, dangling something in front of someone and saying, here, you can do, you're not supposed to do it, but we're giving you the opportunity to do it. So if you've got all of those, do you have all those buses there all day long, or where do they go?
Yeah, during the day, they would lay over on the, in the curbside no standing zone, they would be there.
So a good eight hours there.
If we should, I mean, if it's, if it makes sense, and I would agree that it may make sense to make sure that the bus drivers are very well aware of what the city law is regarding idling, you know, but, you know, you see these no idling signs around, that would be, posting those, put something in their paycheck. There are ways of getting this message out, that this is not something that the school is imposing, it's a citywide law that we expect to comply with.
I understand that, but I guess my point is, is that now you've moved sort of the private parking portion, because now that, that area is no longer going to exist, because we're putting a building there. So you've moved sort of that private, you know, parking now onto the street.
Into the...
For seven hundred and twenty-four feet of street. And I just would like you to address that impact, because I assume that doesn't happen now, and this will be a new condition on that street.
No, I mean, the buses...
They would drop, they'd drop the kids off, and then they probably will go into a yard and, and park their, their bus.
We can, we can go into a little more detail about how the existing bus operations work, and then...
And what the new condition is going to be.
What the enlargement and, you know, the expansion of the building would do, and certainly give that in more detail.
And, and to, just to overlay onto that, because we had talked earlier about, what if there was trash pickup on McDonald instead of Day Hill, just because it's a commercial street?
Right, but I think, I mean, it's my understanding, you know, the trash pickup, you know, there's, it is done by the city, it's part of, it's, you know, this is City Department of Sanitation, they don't have a private parking firm doing this, and if the sanitation, if their route is on Day Hill rather than McDonald, how easy would it be, or how receptive would sanitation department be to changing?
They don't have a route on McDonald, don't they do some trash pickup on McDonald?
We could find out, I mean, as I said, the, I don't know, the only use, if there's a school, then, you know, the commercial use at the end of the block would not be using know, the commercial use at the end of the block would not be using city sanitation. We can look into that in greater detail. As far as the sanitation, I mean, just, in, you know, if I may weigh in on some of the early conversation you were having with Mr. Freeman, in terms of the actual trash generation, as we noted, you have 1,000 kids there now. It should be a relatively simple matter to count how many hefty bags you're putting on the curb twice a week, multiply that by 1.5, and you know how much more you're doing.
Right.
So rather than, I mean, we certainly reach out to some people who, who have experience in this, but I think, you know, keeping it simple is advisable, and if you have the exact same use in the exact same location, why not use that as your data source?
Okay, that's fair. Okay. Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Heineman?
I had a question about the structural report.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
My question was that since your building is to the rear property line, right on the rear property line, how are you going to dig these new spread footings and erect these columns when you have no, you have no space to do it? I mean, are you going to dig new footings from inside the basement?
That's what the structural engineer was proposing.
And how are you going to, because you have no access from the adjacent neighbors' yards on Day Hill.
Correct. Well, from some of them, actually, we do, but.
This is actually, the, the columns will have to step out from the existing building.
Into our building.
Into your building, so you're going to have to make holes in the existing building.
In the basement.
And through all the floors in order to install the columns.
We just did that, actually, and, and it was a board case on Carroll Street in Crown Heights. We added two floors to a building, and that's what they did.
And isn't that going to jeopardize the existing steel structure?
I don't believe it's a steel structure, I think it's masonry right now, and I don't think so. He, this structural engineer, if we want, we can pull him in for the next hearing to come and testify, but he thinks that he's done it before, and he seems to feel he can do it.
Right, but I looked at some of the buildings that he referenced, and in all of those cases, you had yards around the building where you could actually do this work.
I, I understand. I, I will have him address this in another letter a little bit more. No problem. Not a problem. And if the chair would like, we will get, I will ask the client, we will hire another one or two people to give a different look on the building in order, and give the board a 47A, 47B, 47C.
It's really about, well, so let's just go back to like what's going on here also. You know, this is a variance application, so you're supposed to be establishing programmatic need, which has actually not been established in the statement of findings. You know, you're supposed to say, we have this many students in this many classes for this many students currently, there's a shortage, the, it means that class, let's say, the fifth grade meets at this time, and therefore, we can't have whatever it is, music classes going on at the same time because they're in that room, so as a result, we teach music classes in the hallway, and so that's terrible, and so we're creating another room for this, whatever. You're supposed to.
You would like me to break it down?
Yeah, you need to break down really what's existing, why that's inadequate, and what specific uses there are, so you can account for all that additional floor area, which is significant, right?
Yeah, 100% that.
Okay, so maybe in, in understanding that, so, and then we talk about trying to break down the mass of the building, because another finding is neighborhood character, and I do understand that you've got a two-story base, right? But you did go on your drawings, and you went and you adjusted the fenestration on the second floor, so it means, and besides that, you're going to be dropping columns down, it's going to be a significant amount of work in this existing building, which I'm assuming is going to be done while the students are not there, right? So the little girls are not going to be on Reed Street lying down, studying.
Usually, they do the, they try to do the column work in the summer, and so by the time.
It's a big building, that's a lot of work for a summer job.
Two and a half months. The columns and footings, you can, you can, usually can get in.
But you're also showing changes in fenestration, so on the second floor, right? You're opening the windows? That's what, that's the way I understand it, you're making them burn?
I don't think so, but I'll check that out.
Oh, I see, no, it's not like that, okay.
We left, the outside, they tried to a little bit dress up the outside, but it's the same fenestration.
Okay, so, so we're talking about the massing of the added floors, right? And to the extent that you can coordinate the added floors with the lower floors in some way, so stylistically, it looks like it's one building, that's, that's what you're trying to do. But what you, what you did was only, you didn't actually change the massing of the building, it's still a 600-foot-long slab, with the exception of two stair towers that pop up on the top, so that's not actually a change in massing, right? So, so there is a way to give us recesses, to give there open space, something, where yes, maybe you're giving up a little bit of classroom space, but maybe it's not efficiently laid out. I mean, there's ways for you to accomplish this.
It's very hard.
But the impact on the neighborhood is as important as meeting all of the other findings, right?
Remember, the front, the only thing that's looking at the front is the subway coming out. It's not, you're saying the neighbors on the front, there, there are no neighbors on the front. We have the subway looking out, but we will try and come up with something, some recesses, and try and give it a little bit more, that's not a problem.
But you also have the neighbors to the rear.
That's.
And so, you know, think about what you are going to be looking at if you're standing in someone's rear yard.
Correct.
And I remember we had this wonderful conversation about like the Breuer buildings.
Right.
Which I absolutely adore, and there was this, there was this wonderful juxtaposition between, you know, glazing and, and different materials, and the way he made things look like they were recessed, and they weren't necessarily recessed, but visually, you know, you saw that, that there, there were different planes and not just one sort of monolith. And I think that that's what we were sort of getting to, is breaking up that monolithic look so that it's visually interesting when you're sitting in your rear yard, you're sitting in the backyard, and you've got a 60-foot wall, you want to be able to look at it and go, all right, I can deal with that, as opposed to sort of one large mass.
Right, so we can't, we can't change the bottom floors back there.
Right.
But the top floors, we, I believe we did that, and that's why we changed, you know, you know, this is the slopes of the, of the roofs, which is only underneath the hallway. It's broken up as much as you can over there.
But that rear, the existing rear wall, you kind of have to blend in, I understand where you're going, but you have to also blend in your existing rear wall. So whether it's by a treatment or, I don't know how you want to do it.
We can't get in.
You, you work wonders, I know you can do this. You'll go back, you'll go back, you'll look at it, and you'll, you'll see what I mean.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
You can do it.
We'll see what neighbors we get permission from, and we will try, and if we get, well, then on those lots, I can ask them to do something to the lower floors, but I have to get permission. We happen to have a formal, nice number, which I'll try and get you for the next hearing, neighbors on Day Hill permission.
Develop a great design, it will sell itself.
And you know, one way is look at, look at magazines, look at books, I'm sure there are other problems that were similar to this with a long monolithic building that was broken up in a way that became an asset, right?
I'm a technical guy, I'm, I sleep, eat, and drink zoning, okay? So.
That zoning, this is the zoning.
I understand. So I, what I am is a little bit smarter to know when I bring in somebody to do this type of design. So we will bring in somebody, maybe we'll even bring him in for the hearings to speak, and, and make a nice board for the board to see. No, no pun intended. But, you know, when it comes to the zoning and the building code, Susan knows, knew my father, we, we go back a long time, and my father used to appear in front of the board, you're talking about years and years ago. So these things, I'll take care of right away, and like what you're asking us for the findings, we can take care of. When it comes to the design, we'll get somebody, more in, more people in, to give a nicer design, and we'll see what we can do.
I have one other question.
And the structural, yes.
Yes, and then the, in the seller plan, you still show entrances to the buildings on Day Hill from the kitchen.
Right.
And I don't see the need for that.
Fine.
And it's probably part of this catering business that the residents complain about.
Okay, we'll close, we'll close that. And don't forget, we said we would put into resolution no catering.
Right.
We agreed to that.
But we wanted to.
Would you like me to put it on the second?
Because apparently, there's catering in that other school, and it's not okay.
Would you like me to put it on the, on the cellar floor plan?
Yes, make sure there's.
I'll put the note on, no problem.
There's a note, and there's no door.
Five doors, five doorways there.
Okay.
Right, okay. Okay, so.
I'm going to need about six weeks in order to get these designed. I mean, I rushed it for this one, and I had the guy.
Don't rush design.
Okay.
We may have, good projects need, need good time.
Okay, I think you have to.
Speakers, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, okay. Are there any speakers on this item?
Please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Richard Klass, I'm attorney for Day Hill Realty, I appeared several times previously. First of all, I don't practice generally in this area law, I find it fascinating to come here, and I don't mind coming again, but there was a deadline set last time I was here, of October 14th, for submissions by the applicant, and I just heard the experts say we had other submissions yesterday. So I'm, I'm a little bit surprised, and I also, since not seeing it, I can't address whatever other submissions there were, so to the extent that there is a deadline, I'd like for the applicant to meet it, and to the extent that I'm being kept in my deadline for opposition or objections to the submissions, I'd like for that to be firm. Second of all.
We also didn't have a chance to review it, because it was just submitted yesterday.
I, I want to first say that now I hear that, I think that you commissioners get it, the complaints from my client, from the other neighbor who spoke, is that basically they want to put up a big ugly building. The response about McDonald Avenue side, which is, who cares what it looks like from there, there's a subway, I think that that speaks to who cares what it looks like from the back of the building from their perspective. So they just want to put up what was termed a prison, but what we call the big ugly building, which will affect all of the residents, the neighbors on the Day Hill roadside. As far as parking goes, in the submissions of the photos by the applicant, the buses, this was a while ago, but view number four of March 12th, 2013, shows the buses covering the McDonald Avenue side, running the length of the building, by adding so many more students, and I haven't seen this DOT updated report, so I can't comment to it, but that will necessarily cause the buses themselves to spill over onto the adjacent streets, the side streets, Day Hill roadside, and parking was a huge issue. As far as garbage goes, I don't, I did not know that one of the requirements that may be imposed upon this is a no catering provision, but there is catering going on. And that was admitted last time, which is talking about alumni of the school that may be putting on weddings or et cetera. I think that that lacks in candor, but even getting past that is that there's a reference to a garbage shed, which may, may not be big enough, and is certainly off premises, and based on the proposed plan I saw. But also, if they're doing just city collection, and they're running a catering business, which they're not even supposed to, or even if they didn't run the catering, it probably calls for commercial carting. It, it seems that the amount of garbage that's created is just too much. With that, I, I will conclude, and I submitted an additional letter date October 21st, which I'd like to supplement to the original objections to my client. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
Good morning, Joseph Marad, I live at 351 Day Hill. Until these hearings started, you couldn't get past 311, 317 on a Friday night into Saturday, the garbage was up this high, probably 20 feet long, all black plastic bags. I've been up there three or four times, because being a religious institution, nobody's there on Saturday, and when either the city sanitation workers or the private carers, or sanitation does not pick up commercial garbage, they leave this stuff all over the sidewalk. I've been up there three or four times with my bags and my broom, cleaning it up, because I live there, I don't want that filth. In front of 311, 317, I don't know if anybody knows it, but the sidewalk is like this. You could go skiing there in the summer. How anybody built a sidewalk like that and got away with it, I don't know. Last month, we heard that we have to have two more floors, a three-foot parapet wall, and a 10-foot-high fence to enclose an outdoor playground for the students. They have a bigger than three-foot parapet wall there now, let them do a little construction, put up the fence, and put the playground on the existing second-story roof instead of adding two more. Anybody who tells you there isn't catering going on there is living in fairy tale land, because the people in the yellow jackets going up and down the street at night, that's a valet on their back, speaks differently. The people on Avenue C complain because of the beeping of horns, the hollering, the yelling when people are dropping their cars off, picking their cars up. Within a half a mile of this facility, which is not in Borough Park, it's in Kensington, there are three more huge schools being built. And I'm outside every day. I don't think for the high school, 311 to 317, I don't think I see 110 girls this year going there. There were more last year, people graduated, the top grade graduated. There aren't that many come there, and as far as around the corner, that's all the grade school children get off, the buses there. I don't think, somebody should be there with a stopwatch, because a rough count one day showed between the two buildings, there was maybe about 400, if there were that many over there. There's not that many. And when they build these new schools that are going up, and two of them are girl's schools, in almost Borough Park proper, I don't know where they're going to get this additional student body from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If the board would like, I can give you a list of all the students.
But maybe you could explain the difference between the schools that are, that this gentleman was speaking of, and your school, because I'm assuming you're servicing different communities?
If you know anything about hasidus, it's different hasidus. This is, and this one is bells, I don't know if you remember the old song, when shtetl of bells, I don't know if you're familiar with it, this is bells. Later on today, we're having a hearing on a school square, different areas, Galizia, Ukraine, where they came from, different hasidus. I have a job, a case in front of the board for GUR. I mean, if you look at the population census, it's exploding in Borough Park. I brought that up, it's in the record, there is no room. I can give you a list of the whole student body, then we'll add it to the record.
No, the list of the student body isn't necessary. Maybe Mr. Heineman actually could pick that up in the EAS, he could just talk about the schools in the neighborhood, and how they're servicing different communities and school population, that kind of thing, just to sort of round out that, that story.
No problem.
Okay. But obviously, the trash is a problem, you can hear.
I 100% agree.
Yeah.
I, I have a problem over here, is that it's two separate buildings, and he's talking about 311, 317.
Which is 311, 317?
That's Day Hill Road, that's not our building.
No, I know, but is it that, is it the part of the lot?
The high school building.
It's the high school building.
And I can't, and we're talking, they're not, and we're closing up the entrances, so I don't know what to tell you.
Okay. Okay. But just a reminder, no, no catering in this building, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we said we're putting it on the.
Yes, putting it on and living by it, right?
Okay.
So are they currently using your kitchen?
No.
Then those entrances could be closed now.
Correct. Not a problem, we'll put it on.
Okay. Are there, any other speakers on this item? Okay. Okay, you need some time, we said six weeks, right, to do.
For submission.
A gorgeous, gorgeous project.
I'll try.
Drop dead gorgeous, where people say, wow, let's take a trip to McDonald Avenue and take a look at this great building. That's what we want. Okay? So, okay, six weeks, it hits us. So that's, so six weeks kind of takes us into December, mid-December, in which case there's no hearings after the 16th, right? So which would mean if you submit it on the 16th.
We would have a January.
Right, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Let's do it right, once and for all, okay?
Let's do it right, once and for all, okay, that's terrific. So if you, so let's just do it like this, so if we were up for a January 6th hearing, but we also need opposition to respond, okay? So we need you to submit on the 16th. So we need you to submit on the 16th of December, opposition to speak, to submit on December 30th, the day before New Year's Eve. And then the hearing, that doesn't work, the hearing, oh, and then you want to, they want to respond to opposition. You need a chance to do that, so what is it, 30th? You respond on the 6th to opposition for a hearing, I'm afraid, at the end of January, January 27th, because there's no hearing the week of the 9th.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the 27th would be the next one.
Well, we'll work on it.
Did you get that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 23, 4214 BZ, 783 Lexington Avenue, Manhattan.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Okay, I think there was only one question from Commissioner Montanez.
You just, you mentioned that the signage is grandfathered under a prior business with prior permits, so-
Yes.
The DOB should just review that for compliance.
Okay, thank you.
So if you could just submit those materials, but otherwise, we can close this hearing, assuming there are no speakers on this item? Okay, so we can schedule this for a decision on November 18th, but so you should, sorry, wrong calendar, November 18th for your submission on, is it too soon to submit next week? Is it, how much time?
We'll try, it shouldn't be, we just have to get our hands on the paperwork, it shouldn't be.
Okay, so, how about this, per decision on November 25th-
That's fine.
-with your submission on November 12th.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Aye, yeah, motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 24, 6414 BZ, 1320 East 23rd Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Lyra J. Altman. Once again, I did attend your executive session yesterday. I will respond to your comments from yesterday, they're going to be very similar from the discussion on the prior case. We've spoken with the architect, and he's going to review the attic and the dormers per your request. Regarding the rear yard study, we will follow the discussion from the prior case, photos from the rear yard, see what the view is going to be for the neighbors.
And what's this, the garage, what happens to the garage?
That was the next thing I was going to say, next on my list, the garage and porch are being removed from this project as well.
Your clients are okay with that, no garage?
That's what I'm being told.
Okay.
Spoke with the architect.
Okay.
The act in a metric, we will of course be revising same architect, he'll be following the same request from the prior application. As far as the photo montage, again, we will do it similarly to the way you're requesting. And lastly, the massing study, I can now address, now that I've gotten some guidance from you, I will provide a full massing study with the information that you requested.
And if you could also have the architect look at the porch that's extending into the required front yard, that's further reducing the open space, I'm just curious about this. Maybe one, next time you could bring the architect about this sort of attack on open space. What's so bad about open space?
It's not that there's something wrong with open space. This special permit was actually brought in to give an opportunity for people to enlarge their homes. I'm sure you're aware, it was offered to every area of New York City. It was only taken by a few, community boards 10, 11, part of 14, 15, and at the time 12, who's no longer in it.
Right.
12 actually got the special Borough Park zoning, it was taken out of 73622 in exchange. But this actually was to give the ability to enlarge, most areas of the city said, I'm not interested, we want our green space. People who live in this community decided that wasn't what they wanted. They have larger families, and they wanted larger homes to accommodate, and they were willing to make that trade-off. And that's something that was decided by the community through its community board, through its representatives.
Now, I'm just curious, because, you know, you put a porch and then you can't stand under the porch, because it's, you know, not pleasant, and there, and you have the garage in the rear, and then there's no place to stand, I'm sort of-
And this was a decision made by the community, is that this is what they wanted, and this was the zoning that they wanted to bring in, and you can see how popular the special permit has become, showing you that this really is the character of the neighborhood that the residents want. Not for anyone to judge, other than the residents, the people who live there want this.
Well, there's an urbanism issue there, too, it's not just-
I can also point out that we did notify neighbors, and you don't see neighbors opposing either.
Right.
What you're more likely to see is a neighbor applying.
Yes. We're aware of that. Okay. Okay, were there any other comments on this one? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so-
You can keep the same schedule, 1118 and 129, that would be fantastic.
Okay, that'll work. 1118 and 129 for continued? Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item number 25, 9114 BZ, 3420 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
25? Oh, yeah.
Good morning again, Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Lyra J. Altman. Once again, I did attend your executive session and heard your comments, we're glad that you were happy with the study provided by Urban Cartographics. I know you have some further comments, and Mr. Rasmussen is here with us today, but prior to having him come up and respond to those, I just wanted to respond to a few other items. Regarding the stop work order on the site, violations have actually been cleared. The architect is currently working with the Department of Buildings to take the stop work order off of the site and to get it dealt with, but the violations that are underlying the stop work order have been resolved.
Do you know how long that's going to take?
I'm being told a few weeks, approximately, how many weeks would you think? Approximately three to four weeks is what I'm being informed, yes. That was what I wanted to address first, Mr. Rasmussen, I will let you come up and respond, and the board said they would like to ask you a few questions yesterday.
Good morning, Ian Rasmussen for the applicant. I did hear your comments at the executive session yesterday, I want to thank you for your kind words, as a person who spends a lot of time working on land use studies.
Nice to see you in person for the first time.
Excellent to see you as well. I believe the first comment was in the form of a question of why we thought that the special permit had been selected for this area. That's sort of a strange one for us to try and answer, I think Ms. Altman just addressed some of the general reasons why. I think it's probably true that in different neighborhoods in the city, there are contrasting relationships between what homeowners see as their individual property rights and their collective rights to prevent their neighbor from doing something, and we see different intensities of land use, and people willing to want to live closer together or further apart or on top of each other as a result of that. I don't think there's any question that Midwood is a community that has made it clear that they are willing to swap some of the open space and suburban character of their original form in exchange for having larger homes, and we see that in the R2X zoning, which is actually a kind of a proxy for what the special permit allows, with the rear yard encroachment to 20 feet, and then as of right, FAR of .85 or up to 1.02 with the attic allowance. My understanding is that the R2X zoning, which is mapped just a little bit west of this site, was a response to the neighborhood's call for larger houses, in much the same way that their vote to adopt the 73622 special permit was their way of telling their city the way that they would like their neighborhood to be, and that they would, like I said, exchange perhaps some of the open space in exchange for the ability to enlarge their homes. It's important to note that both the R2X zoning I mentioned and the special permit, they don't actually change the fundamental land use in that it's remaining single-family homes. So I don't think that, as far as a land use planning rationale and the impact of the special permit on sort of the city's infrastructure and other more macro-level concerns, I don't think that the special permit is, has a particularly large impact in the way that a real rezoning would.
Okay.
Perhaps there's more things you want to talk about?
No, with that, with respect to that one, it was really that, I understand the purpose of the special permit when you're talking about the small houses on those little bitty lots, but these are, these are houses that are, you know, comfortable, they have, I can understand, maybe you want to add a little back, something in the rear, but the, what it does is, is it encourages essentially the loss of really good houses built in the sort of 1920s and 30s, and replacement with not necessarily really good houses. So sometimes, let's just say-
I won't, I won't, I won't take my personal opinion on the architecture of old and new buildings into question. I will say that if, just looking at the text of the special permit, it's evident that what you're describing, which is older, smaller homes, essentially being, maybe not torn down, but substantially altered and enlarged, is the natural result of the section.
Right.
So to the extent that the section embodies public policy, the city of New York has decided that in Midwood, the older homes are going to go and they're going to get made larger. The question that I tried to focus on in my report, and that I'm trying to understand the board's side, is if somebody comes forth with a lot that's this size, exactly, you know, what becomes appropriate? I've heard your comments just now about the smaller homes perhaps being more in need of being enlarged, whereas, and I sort of, I understand that rationale, it's just that I don't see the hardship finding in the text of the special permit.
No, there is.
And I don't see the qualifiers, and some of the other special permits in Chapter 73 include specific thresholds of percentages that buildings can be enlarged, raw numbers, you know, certain amount of square feet that a building can be enlarged, and this section didn't include those. And so it's, you know, it's announcing a sort of intent as much with what it did not include with, as with what it did include, so.
I think the other thing that we were just talking about is your extremely well-done report has us really focused on FAR, and it's actually charming how you wrote it, where you said essentially, we're going to look at FAR. Just remember, we're only looking at FAR, it's really the only thing that matters. FAR, did I forget to tell you that FAR is the only thing that matters, because the massing of the building, the experience on the street, is not relevant, because it's really about FAR. But in fact, nobody who goes down the street looks at FAR, they look at the apparent massing. And the one thing that you did include in the study, which sort of pointed, very pointedly to this fact, is that you had frontages of buildings, and the widest building frontage you showed, which was not typical, it was very atypical, was only 65 feet wide, I think. And so, so having revealed what's standard in the neighborhood, where the maximum width is 65 feet, whereas actually most aren't, how does this building, this proposed building-
So the drawing you're referring to also included, it included the buildings width as a percentage of the lots width.
Right.
The problem that I think we could say either of us is having in this debate is that we don't have examples of other 160-foot-long lots, from which we can derive a sort of precedent or an existing neighborhood character. So we're forced to ask the question, if a 16,000-square-foot lot did exist in this neighborhood, what would be what you would expect to find there, and what would be appropriate to be there? So while it's true that there aren't any other homes that are more than 65 feet wide, or whatever the number is, we could take another look, but there also aren't any lots that are the same size as the one we have. It's a single-family district, you know, unless you were going to ask that the owner maybe cut his house in half and sort of replicate the existing pattern of buildings and yards by having, you know, his bedrooms over here and his kitchens and TV room in a different building. That's the question that we were trying to ask, is what is the appropriate-sized home if you were to have this size of lot? And certainly, it's an anomaly, but I will note, and we've done this in prior studies before this board, where we're looking at the relationship between lot areas and floor areas, and we're running a regression analysis. There are neighborhoods that are characterized by home sizes that taper off as lots increase in size, such that smaller lots almost always have higher FARs, and then that number relaxes itself. When we plotted out all of the board's approvals for special permits in this area, we didn't see that, that curve. That is to say that the board has not in the past found smaller homes sort of deserving of a greater waiver under this section. The board has routinely granted waivers apparently in proportion to lot size.
Essentially by FAR.
Right.
Right, right.
Right, I mean, so, I mean, and I'm not trying to be dismissive, but I sort of took my cues from the zoning resolution, which controls the size of homes in this neighborhood by FAR, and then by the board's prior decisions, which speak to the board's opinion in the past about what the character of this community is, and have done so with a consistent view of the appropriate FAR, not a consistent view of the appropriate size of the home.
Okay, but that's where, in every case, and Ms. Altman gave us a list of some of other cases where there were two lots combined, and otherwise it's only single lots, right? In every case, the board is faced with very small lots, effectively, when there are two, they didn't have much frontage, I think the widest frontage was 60 feet in one case. And so what we're being asked to do now is to look at, as you say, an abnormally wide lot at 160 feet, so that's, that's a different-
I would point out to your board that there was actually one application that was across three lots, that was approved in the last year, and there's also one lot that was approved by this board that was 120 by 100. It was around the corner from this site.
But that was a single lot?
That is correct, but there was a statement before that the largest one, I believe, was 60 feet, this was 120 by 100.
Okay, no, 65 was the width of the house, this here, these were-
I don't know the number on the house, I could pull that and certainly provide that to your board, but I think it's important to note that there is another lot around the corner that is quite sizable as well. This specific area has quite a number of large homes, as I submitted to you previously, quite a number of large lots. I would say more so than even the other areas in which the special permit is permitted. This area of Bedford and Avenue M is just specifically known for this.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Rasmussen? Rasmussen? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, so the next part of the question was that you were going to address why you think this special permit is applicable in this case.
What we'll do is, we will be providing something in writing to address that, to the intent on this.
Okay. Okay, is there, are there any other questions?
Yes, I had asked you to verify the existing front yard condition on Avenue M with Sanborn's.
We will do that, I apologize, I might have missed that one.
And I don't think we ever got a survey.
We'll be glad to provide one for you.
Okay, and I think this is something that Commissioner Otley-Brown and I had mentioned about the distance between the side yard.
Right, that you should consider providing a larger side yard to the west, which, because it functions as a rear yard for, at least for the properties that abut it, to the west of it.
What I'll do is, I'll review it with the architect, and we'll discuss it.
Right now, you just have five feet for two-thirds of that width of the lot.
Right.
And it's just, you've got-
What we'll do is, we'll look at it and-
Yeah.
-make an analysis, whether it can be done or what they're wanting to do.
Right, well, you, it certainly could be done, because you've got a lot of space that you can move toward, and you also have a lot of very large spaces in that building that can really be made slightly smaller, so you definitely can do it.
How much space are you discussing, just for point of reference?
I don't know, I would say 10 feet would be appropriate.
The adjacent building apparently is on the lot line.
I believe the adjacent on the lot line is actually a garage.
Oh, okay, because it wasn't, it wasn't very clear, but there is a structure on the lot line. I don't think it's actually a garage.
Right, the one that's on the avenue is, is not a garage. It appears to be a one-story structure and also a garage next to it, so it might be part of the house extending.
I know that in denser neighborhoods, there's usually, there's generally a minimum of eight-foot distance between buildings.
Well, we'll make sure if it's on the lot line, or if it's the garage.
I know it's not required here.
As I said, I believe it's the garage that's here. Yeah, that is the garage, correct? That's what I thought it was. All right.
Okay.
What I'm being told is, all of these houses are oriented this way, so these are the rears that you're having here.
Right.
So these are all garages. I'm being told there-
But that's the rear lot line.
But I'm being told that there are no houses on that line, it is just garages, which is what I had been told before.
I believe there's a house fronting Avenue M.
Fronting Avenue M.
Right.
But there are garages on the lot line, their house is not.
Okay, but still.
So maybe you can just show that, bring, you know, blow it up, so that we can actually see what that condition is?
We'll be glad to.
But I just, there are other things, you know, for instance, all of the different waivers that you're requesting for this, which is again, reducing significantly the open space, is very hard to understand the need for when you're creating such a gigantic house, and so where the site is so huge, so.
I would point out that we're not actually asking for a waiver on this side yard, this side yard request is actually as of right.
Right, but it's still functioning as a rear-
Yard.
A rear yard to the interior- A rear yard to the interior lots on the other side, and there is an expectation by many people that not only will they have 20 or 30 feet of their own rear yard, but they will have a 20 to 30-foot buffer of the adjacent neighbor and the rear rear yard.
As I said.
So that's why I'm asking for you to pull back off.
As I said, we will look into it. I just wanted to point that out, so there was a statement previously by Madam Chair stating that the request being made, and there actually isn't a request being made on that side yard, I wanted that on the record.
Well, less than the required rear yard is actually one of.
Rear yard, yes.
Right.
But not the side yard. A five-foot is a side yard requirement, not a rear yard requirement.
And an enormous increase in lot coverage is the other question. So it's such a big site, why do you need such an enormous increase in lot coverage?
That's, we can talk about it in writing, but I would point out that one of the important things for the architect in designing this building was maintaining as much of a low profile as possible, as opposed to putting the floor area and stacking it up, which would of course reduce the lot coverage. The theory was to bring it down so that it wouldn't be as imposing on the character of the community.
Okay, well.
That was part of the design. And as you see, the front of the building slopes, all of that was done very intentionally as a way to reduce the massing to the block.
Well, because you're also asking for a huge increase in floor area, right? So, and again, going back to, because for me, you know, everybody's getting into the specifics of how far away from the side lot line and all that stuff. For me, I haven't gotten past the, how can this four lot.
We'll address the, we'll address the intent with, with pleasure.
So, don't, you know.
No, understood.
Stick it all in this with a grain of salt.
Of course, we will be addressing it in writing as we stated previously.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Any speakers on this item? Okay, so, do you need additional time on this than on the other submissions? Oh, just, just one thing. One of the submissions from Urban Cartographics wasn't legible, there was a, there was the rear yard, the side yard thing.
We'll resubmit.
And, and to put the rear yard information in there too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You'll do that? We could be on the same schedule as the others, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, so what was that submission on the 11th, on the?
18.
18th? And for a hearing on the 9th?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 26, 9314 BZ, 455 West 37th Street, Manhattan.
Hello, Eric Pilatnik.
Hi. Any comments on this one? Okay, any speakers on this item? Okay. Is it okay to close on this? We just do need to correct that this should be a legalization, so you would.
Yes, we will amend the paperwork.
Make that revision. And, and also in terms of just concern, since we're having a lot of, we're learning a lot, or I am anyway, about physical culture establishments and their noise and effect on neighbors, because this is in a residential building, just as part of the condition of grant that there be adequate sound insulation provided. I know it's an existing building, but just so that the owner is aware that if there are complaints about noise, that they will be isolating as required.
That's fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for, we can close this, for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley-Brown?
Aye.
And so, so a submission, we can vote on this on the 18th, so for a submission on the 5th?
Thank you.
Is this soon?
No, that's fine, it's just a legalization to mark it up, we can do that right away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Item number 27, 9614 BZ, 290 Dykman Street, Manhattan.
So the applicant asked to adjourn this for personal reasons, and so we will adjourn until the 18th of November with a submission on the 10th of November.
New cases, item number 28, 18613 BZ, 117 Gilston Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. I'm Harold Weinberg. I'm going to speak very briefly, I just want you to know that I have brought two consent forms which were just recently handed to me. One is for 123 Gilston Avenue, and one is for 119 Gilston Avenue, very close to the subject site, which I hope is what you would like. I just want to also draw one other item to your attention, something about the narrowness of one of the rooms, which is at least six feet. So there is a section in the 1938 Building Code, 5.1.3, I'm sorry, 5.1.4.1, which I will give you. As a matter of fact, I have two copies, I'll give you one. Of course, if you need more copies, I will submit them. In any event, this section says minimum dimensions of rooms. Living rooms shall have a minimum clear width of six feet in any part, a minimum clear floor area of 60 square feet, and that covers the case at hand. At this point, I would like to call on an associate.
This was actually my question, and I think what you need to do is, one, you're going to have to dimension that room because you don't show us the dimensions of that.
I, I agree. I understood that.
And then you are also going to have to give me something on why you believe the 1938 Building Code is applicable to this building.
Because the building was built prior to 1938.
Then you're going to have to say that in writing.
Well, that's very reasonable, I'd be glad to do that.
There you go.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to call on Mr. Frank Salido, he's an associate of mine, and I would give you another copy or more, as, as you wish.
Good afternoon, Frank Salido for Harold Weinberg. A few questions from the executive session yesterday. First, we'll start with verifying that it complies with Section 2345, I believe was the question. The building to the west has a seven-foot, 11-foot, a seven-foot, 11-inch front yard. Our site has an existing seven-foot, 11-inch front yard, which we are maintaining. The building to the east has a six-foot front yard. It's also currently under construction, maintaining that six-foot front yard. So we are in compliance with 2345.
Good, okay.
Second, the balcony at the front yard, I believe, was a question. It's not a projection into the front yard proper. It is still within the front yard, my allowable front yard.
It's not a projection?
It's not a projection into the required front yard.
Oh.
Okay? And I'll show that on the side elevation, we'll make it.
Well, because you're, why? Because you're saying your required front yard is six feet?
It's five feet.
No.
Even if it's six feet.
It's six feet.
It's, it's still.
Right, because whichever the shallower is the one you get to choose.
Okay.
So, so it's six feet, and it's not a projection? How is it not a projection?
I will clarify that on the side elevation. If it means I have to cut it back four inches, I will. We'll look at it.
Okay.
Okay? Next question, the existing garage, in the basement or lowest level of the building, there is a garage. It's not clearly shown on the plans.
Sorry, let's just go back to the balcony for a second.
Go ahead.
So you show a seven-foot, 11-inch.
Correct.
Front yard where six feet is required, so you get a, you get a break on two feet, right? But, but your balcony is extending, what is it, four feet out?
I will.
So, so I, I don't think you're going to be able to cut it back by that much, but it doesn't mean that you can't have it, you just need to calculate that it's not more than, I think it's a third of the frontage.
We can do that.
So as long as, just show the calculation that it's not more than whatever the requirement is, I think it's a third.
Okay. Back to the garage.
Mm-hmm.
The garage is at this lowest level, it's not clearly shown on the drawings, and we'll dress them up a little bit. It was built that way, it's going to remain there, and we'll take care of that.
Yeah, the drawings are a little unclear in your dimensioning, especially in, you know, your section.
They need a little attention.
And, you know, you need to show that you have an existing level, and that's where your garage is, and you're coming in without having to, you know, decrease your, you know, to go below the sidewalk level, I guess, that you're going to straight shot.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't really look that way in your section, and it doesn't add up when you start adding up the numbers. It appears that you're actually short.
Right.
So I think you just, you know, it's probably just an addition issue, but I think you need to just take.
They, they need a little attention and they'll get it.
Okay.
What else was there? The, again, with the lowest level, it is not a unit, it's not going to be a unit. This is a two-family home, which will remain a two-family home.
But the space that's not occupied by the garage should still be calculated as part of the floor area.
We can include that if you like.
Well, isn't that.
When the building was built.
Isn't that the way it's defined by the zoning resolution?
No, no. It depends on what zone you were in, when the building was built. And over the course of zoning history, there are certain levels which have been excluded as floor area.
Like the ceiling.
Ordinary use.
Cellar, though.
Well, cellar, basement, lowest level. If we read, I will look into this, and we'll respond in writing.
Okay.
As far as the three kitchens go, again, that is a Department of Buildings issue. If it should get to fruition, it will be on the CVO.
But it does show three kitchens.
It's.
Where's the third kitchen?
There is no third kitchen. It's in the statement, and that will be withdrawn from the statement.
Oh.
It has nothing to do with BSA.
That's.
Now, there was another question about a garage.
What does it have to do, if, does it have something to do with that, this building?
No, it has nothing to do with that. It's buildings, if they want an accessory kitchen, it has nothing to do with this.
So are you proposing an access? I mean, just to understand this, are you proposing an accessory kitchen at the basement level, or?
At the walk-in level, at the lowest floor.
At the, at the walk-in level?
On the basement.
Where it's just showing garage.
Well, whether it's a, it's the lowest level, we'll call it a basement, that's fine. All right, again, it needs to be adjustment, if it drops down two inches below grade, yes, it's a basement.
Well, even if it's on grade, it's still a basement, no?
No, it's a floor.
No, it's got to be a little bit lower.
So that makes it's a three-story building instead of.
I'll look into it.
Okay.
Okay?
Right?
Now, there was another question about the garage. Do you mean the garage in the rear, the PVC storage shed, or is this another, the same garage we're discussing?
Well, what was the question about the garage?
It was something you had mentioned, I believe.
Oh, I don't, I, I had, the way I seen the garage, it looked like it was a dwelling unit.
Okay, I'll clarify that.
And the, the photo, looking at it from the rear yard, it had a very nice doorway out into the backyard, so it just looked like a dwelling unit from the photos.
No, it's not going to be. It'll be on the CVO, that, there'll be a zoning, you know, there'll be a restriction on it. I think we addressed the bedroom.
So, but we'll, we'll make clear in the resolution that this is for a two-family unit.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
The rear stair, there is an application on file with the Department of Buildings to legalize it. Currently, we're just working on getting a plan examination appointment, it should be clarified and approved soon.
So it, it actually should not necessarily appear on our drawings if you haven't gotten approval for it, you might, they might say no.
It's, it's.
Which you're going to.
It, it complies, it's, it's okay, it's, it's fine. And the, there was another question about the front stairs.
Mm-hmm.
Do they encroach into the front yard? These are the existing stairs which lead up to the main entrance. We are enclosing them at the intermediate platform. The stairs are going to remain, so we're not touching the existing steps or stairs or flight that goes up to the main entrance. So they are existing.
You're just pulling it forward.
No, we're not pulling it forward, we're leaving them the way they are.
That doesn't mean that.
Oh, I thought what's happening is because you're making the addition in the front, right?
The way it works out is that the platform, where you go up five or six steps, then there is a platform, an intermediate platform, then another run of steps to get you to that first level or the first habitable level, it just works out, that's where our front wall is.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it just, they don't always work this way, but this one is a, it works out. Okay?
Okay, got it. Okay, any other comments on this? Any people, any speakers on this item? Okay, so you just need to clarify those questions in writing and on the drawings, right? So then if you could submit that material the 18th of November for a hearing on the 9th of December, is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 29, 2614 BZ, 45 East 75th Street, Manhattan.
Frank Angelino on behalf of the UHIT School. We'll respond specifically to some of the questions that were raised, and let me introduce who is with me today, who join in the presentation. Preston Gumberick, who is a partner at Robert A.M. Stern Architects, who is the architect for the project, and Joan Lonergan, who is the head of the UHIT School. Mr. Gumberick will speak directly to the issue of the rear yard and the addition and enlargement at the rear yard, and Mrs. Lonergan will speak to the issue of the addition at the roof. As the board is aware, both of these, this application first went to the Landmark Commission and the Community Board. Landmark Commission approved both of these items, and the Community Board recommended unanimously. You have consents from several neighbors, and I just want to put into context, the school itself is on a zoning lot which permits a 5.10 FAR. The school, the existing school, before the addition of the townhouse lot, which was acquired three years ago, has an FAR of approximately 3.4. With the additions, with the two bulk waivers that we are requesting in this application, the total FAR for the site will be 3.5 or 2.6 less than the maximum permitted floor area of 5.10 on the zoning lot. So that if the, the proposal can be characterized as a modest proposal, which I think is accurate, I think it could also be quantified as sort of a miniscule addition to the existing school buildings as the new campus will be constituted with the townhouse lot added to the 60-year-old UHIT School. As part of this application, I know that we submitted a letter from Robert A.M.